Oh, no. And I thought was that Las Palmenos? And there's two people walked in and I thought somebody, but I couldn't, couldn't tell for sure.
You've got your name on what? Oh. Pictures.
Here we got, we got a wild one.
I'd call the order, the Isabella County Board of Commissioners. Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Madam Clerk, nice to see you back. We start us off with a roll call.
Commissioner Weber?
Here.
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Jalzinski?
Here.
Commissioner Engler?
Here.
Commissioner Moreno?
Here.
Commissioner Swainy?
Here.
Commissioner Hope?
Here.
All present, Chairman.
Thank you. And next up, we have an approval of the agenda. We'll have general public comment on agenda items only. We have no presentations and special reports tonight. Uh, no appointments to board the commission. We'll have the consent agenda. We'll have our committee reports. There are ten items. Uh, we have no governmental affairs. We'll have the administrators' controllers' report. We have no unfinished business. We have four items on new business. We'll have general public comment, restricted three minutes on any topic. And we'll have announcements by the board. And then we'll have an adjournment. Is there any corrections or subtractions or additions? The adoption of the agenda as presented? Or the move by Jalzinski and support by Hope. Nice to see you back, Commissioner. Okay, we have an agenda. Let's, uh, on favor, signify by eye.
Aye.
Vote is the same? Okay, now we have an agenda. Okay, next up, I'd like to open it up for general public comment on agenda items only. Uh, please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes, please. See, no one coming forward at this time. Is there anybody online? Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the general public, uh, comments on agenda items only. Uh, there will be another opportunity at the end of meeting for comment on any topic. So as we have no presentations, uh, no appointments, uh, consent agenda and Commissioner Jalzinski, why don't you start us off? Motion, move to approve and place on file the September 2nd, 2025 regular meeting minutes in the September 9th, 2025 Finance Committee Committee of the Whole minutes.
Support Swainy.
The move by Jalzinski, supported by Swainy. Any more discussion on that? Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call, please. Yeah, all favor, signify by eye.
Aye.
It'll be one of those meetings. I can tell that right now. All polls the same. The consent agenda has passed, so I can't, can't claim this is my first time doing this either, so. Okay, let's remove right into committee reports. Um, Commissioner Swainy, you want to start us off on the committee reports?
Many committee of the whole reports, number one, August 29th, 2025 invoice list, September 5th, 2025 invoice list, and the August 28th, 25, 2025 adjustments list. The motion reads, move to ratify and place on file the August 29th, 2025 invoice list in the amount of 1,190,962 dollars and 38 cents. The September 5th, 2025 invoice list in the amount of 317,0782 and 94 cents. The adjustment list dated August 28th, 2025.
Support. The move by Swainy, supported by Jalzinski, uh, Administrator Smith, you want to take the August 29th?
First one on the August 29th of 1,190,962 dollars, 38 cents. The general fund portion of that is 70,245 dollars, 33 cents. On this first page are the ones that are over 5,000 dollars for review and the remaining document has been sent out to the Board of Commissioners prior to this, as well as going through the Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole. Couple of the large ones on here is Advanced Benefit Solutions of 22,221 dollars and two cents to the monthly dental and vision insurance and MRP properties of 17,091 dollars, 46 cents for monthly rent on the 510 and 614 West Pickard Street properties. And then we got the Clark Construction, which will come up later in the agenda for the payment of 1,026,944 dollars and 38 cents for final construction charges on the correctional facility.
Okay, any questions on those items? Okay, seeing none, let's go to the September 5th.
This one is 317,782 dollars, 94 cents. The general fund portion is 106,794 dollars and 85 cents. The large ones that are over 5,000, just naming off a couple, University of Michigan Health for the monthly medical examiner fees for August of 16,335 dollars and 55 cents. And we also have for custom heating and plumbing of 15,525 dollars for furnace replacements for the juvenile non-secure detention center from the Facilities Department. There was also a couple ones on the last one as well for some, uh, furnace replacements that were getting done in this year, as well as getting on track to getting some done for the next, uh, next fiscal year as well. So those are the large items, as well as Wellpath LLC of 49,840 dollars for the monthly medical service contract, uh, for the, for the corrections.
Administrator, uh, Mr. Administrator Smith, what's the, um, Avanti Law Group, MAC Criminal Billing, what's that all about?
That is for the, uh, for the Public Defender's Office for, I believe, um, contracted attorneys.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Yes. I don't have my paper copy, so I'm working out for electronics. So I, I want to go back to the previous invoice list and, uh, I'm gonna get back up on my soapbox. I'm not trying to be difficult to the board or to the administration, but I keep finding, uh, water being charged through jury fees or professional services, which everybody else charges it to a supply account, which, which makes sense. The other two don't. And I'm gonna keep railing on this until somebody can tell me why, uh, a rational argument that we're charging it to 800 Sears, which is contractual, and not a supply account. It just, it just doesn't make sense. And I think the administration owes it to the board to be as accurate and compliant with state and federal statutes as possible, especially the, uh, uniform chart of accounts put out by Treasury. Yep, go ahead.
And open. We did have, and I told this at the last meeting, we had discussions with our new auditors. They said that this is not in any material shape, that this is anything wrong. They've been doing this for 20 years. As a matter of fact, there were 27 invoices in fiscal year 24 where this was done, but never brought up. And now it is. Not sure why. And it's also jury fees. So what they're trying to do, instead of charge this to supplies, which that it makes look like it's more of a a use of the staff, this is used for jury. So they're trying to take anything related to jury fees, I believe, that's your fees and the water, and put it into one line so they can accurately track jury costs. And if we want, we can get a report from the trial court and ask why for sure they're doing that. So that is my response.
And I respond to that, it can be done using the uniform chart of accounts and setting up a correct activity area. As for, uh, not having a material defect, the dollar amounts are small. But I think we need to be accurate on small items and all items. And I, I and I'm gonna keep railing on this because I, uh, even though it may not come up in the audit, it doesn't make it right. And we need to follow, uh, I think, the state uniform chart of accounts as, as, as much as possible, and that can be adapted to the needs of whoever's wanting to track their expenses. And I would like, because it's professional services, I'd like to see a copy of the contract. We have our vendor, uh, policy now. And under professional services, uh, we will have a contract, correct?
There's no, there's no contract for that. It's a service. It's a general service. There's no contract on that.
So we can have a professional service that we don't have a contract on?
In this situation, yes.
I'm still unconvinced, and I'll bring it up again next time. Thank you. Okay, any more discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the invoice list.
Adjustment list?
Adjustments, let's see.
Got one more. Uh, this is the adjustments list dated August 24th. This is a list of items that invoices were corrected, uh, to, uh, fix errors that were made. There were two errors made on this first page, uh, for small minimal amounts, and the rest is early payments to avoid late fees and to get discounts. And those are your traditional Consumers Energy's Gordon Food Service and DTE Energy. Then this listed too is presented to the board, um, prior to the meeting as well.
Okay, any questions on the adjustment list? Any questions on the entire, uh, previous discussions on this? Uh, seeing none, let's proceed to vote. Madam Clerk, roll call?
Weber?
Yes.
Hough?
Yes.
Commissioner Jalzinski?
Yeah.
Mr. Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven I. Zero Nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, next up, Commissioner Weber, you want to take item number two?
Procomm final payment, motion, move to approve the final payment to Procomm in the amount of 99,956 dollars and 94 cents for the Central Dispatch Backup Center console. Is this really the final payment?
It's been moved by Commissioner Weber, supported by Jared Jalzinski. We have the sheriff up here to make a comment.
I'm gonna do it different tonight. So, uh, this has been, last few years, been here several times. Um, just kind of want to recap it for the new commissioners, the new administrator, anybody that may not understand this. So in 2019, CMUPD, um, they began a, they, they were, they were having a discussion on campus about critical infrastructure, radio coverage. Having their, their towers, their dorms, uh, their radios would not work. This became a very, um, serious life-threatening issue or could potentially become a life-threatening issue. So in the summer of 2021, I got invited by Mark Griffiths, former emergency manager and Lieutenant Osmond, who's now the chief at the CMU, for a pontoon ride on Lake Isabella. I thought I was going for a, a soda or, and, uh, maybe a fish or two, but that was not the case. Um, we had a long conversation about this and they said, you know, with the contacts you have with the senators and, and, and representatives, we need to make this happen. So we reached out to the senator and representative at the time, um, that were there. We presented our case to them. We actually had a meeting and, uh, did a PowerPoint in front of them and, and kind of explained our crucial and critical need, which was not only CMU, but it was the box stores in Mount Pleasant. It was Union Township. It was the tribal infrastructures. It was the schools in these areas. They went back and they went to work for us and generated a appropriation from the state of Michigan at 4.8 million dollars for this project, which was phenomenal. Um, that gave us the radio tower, new subscriber equipment, which is radios and, and mobiles for our cars, um, the BDAs for buildings that didn't work after the tower was up, which was a couple of schools in this case, and then the final, which is in front of you today, the backup center for, um, CMU. Um, we started this December 2022. A rough quote was developed from the state of Michigan, uh, MPSCS, DTMB, Motorola, who's our sole source for the state. We broke that down to those four phases that I just spoke about. Finally, on 3/17/23, there was an official kickoff meeting for the project. On 10/30/24, the tower went live and all agencies performed a successful test in all the areas that normally would not have worked for them outside of those two schools that we addressed. From there, we developed a needed response to the two schools, made that happen with LOUs, change orders, and we were able to get the BDAs. I do not know, I know you always ask me, Commissioner, but I don't know the status. I know they're all set. I think Shepherd may be in process, but I don't, I don't know where the, the tribe's at at this point in time. Um, and then the final cleanup money that we had here. In this project, we had 450 documents created and reviewed. There were dozens and dozens of meetings on every level of this project, most, uh, either weekly or bi-weekly, which was right in the middle of all the bi-weekly and weekly meetings for the other project we had going. Um, there are many conversations throughout the last five years developing this project in order to keep it moving forward. At the end, we, uh, we were $1 off. And if you remember, we got a great deal on a half a million dollar shelter from Consumer Energy and they charged us a dollar. So we didn't run that through the grant. We just paid that. We thought that'd be okay. So we were a dollar off at the end of 4.8 million dollars, which I thought was pretty good as well. Um, we got that completely reimbursed, other than the one that's standing in front of you tonight. The tower is operational. It creates a loop into Midland County and the existing tower. So if one leg goes down, we still have good communications. The BDA projects are underway. And this finalizes the last piece, the last puzzle, the last part, the last dollar of this grant. So we are real happy with this project. Um, we're happy that it came out the way it did. This, uh, goes to Motorola, who is going to be the, um, provider for that backup center at CMU, um, which is the county's backup center, so. Questions?
Comment? We came on, I came on the board about the same time you did, and the first topic that was a big thing was the radios. And because there were so many dead spots, and especially because I had all the Western townships, that it, it was a big issue because they couldn't communicate. So finally, after all this time, it's, it's done and it's been a process, but it's well, was well needed, but, uh,
We don't, we don't have those complaints anymore.
Congratulations, yeah, because it was an issue. And yeah, there was, it wasn't a good solution, solution at that time, so. Okay, any more comments? Yes.
I just want to thank you, Sheriff, for all the work you put into this.
Good, thank you.
And we all appreciate that. And I guess we should thank, uh, Sir, Chief Osserman and Mark Griffiths as well.
Yeah, they, they roped a dope me on the boat, so.
And I'm glad they did.
It was good. It needed done. It was a lot of work. Um, you know, and there was times that it kind of come off the rails down in Lansing and we would, I would make the phone calls and get our representatives back on track and they would go back and fight for us. And, um, we were just very fortunate to pull this off. And and I'll be honest with you, uh, the state, um, MPSCS or the state, um, uh, CGIS, which is Criminal Justice Information, there's changes coming in by 2027 where some of these radio frequencies will need to be encrypted, where you can't, you know, the public can't hear them, you know, because it's, it's criminal justice information. Um, we are in a very good spot because all of our radios, and we did this on purpose, are, are, um, capable of all levels of encryption. We've had meetings just as recently, a week or two ago, uh, with all the players and partners about what that looks like, and then getting MPSCS to get our programming up in speed. Uh, we're gonna be kind of stalled out a little bit until MSP gets their radios, which we usually chase them, but they're gonna be chasing us this time, which was a good feeling. So, uh, when they get their radios upgraded to the encrypted side, we will be able to do that without having to spend any other dollars. And some counties are going to be really, uh, impacted financially because this is not a cheap change. Some of the radios they have just aren't capable of it, period. So they have to buy new radios, which are very expensive. So we're, we're ahead of the game for once. We're pretty happy.
That's good.
Okay, any other comments? Sheriff, uh, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Jalzinski?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hope, you want to take item number three?
Yep, number three, Automated Clearinghouse ACH Policy Number 421, motion, move to, whoop, to the adoption of the Automated Clearinghouse ACH Policy Number 421 as required by Public Act 738 of 2002.
Support.
The move by Hope, supported by Swainy. I'm not gonna make you read, read that, so we reviewed that. Any comments?
No, I just, um, this has been, uh, this is required by PA 738, 2002. Uh, we've had a policy. It just was not, uh, approved by the Board of Commissioners. Um, but, uh, Finance Director Whitler and Treasurer Schaefer kind of got together and made sure this was up to date and covered everybody's needs and, uh, will function well for us. So thank you.
Well done.
Comments? Okay, seeing no more questions, uh, let's proceed to vote.
Commissioner Jalzinski?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Hope? Yes.
Sheriff Engler?
Yes.
Seven I, zero Nays, motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Campbell, you want to do item four, please?
Yes. Individual Service Contracts for Activities, motion. Move to the individual services contract between the Isabella County Commission on Aging and James Vandermei, Angela McGurk, Catherine Tobin, Judy Schwartz, Steve Wood, and Mary Alsager to provide activity and Virginia Kane to serve as Activity Living Newspaper Editor effective October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, and authorize for chairperson signing.
Support.
The move by Campbell, supported by Moreno, discussion. Comments? Yes, Commissioner Swainy.
Definitely, uh, say something about, you know, that he's, people provide great services to Commission on Aging and then everybody, you know, comes and uses those services, uh, across the board. And there's, you know, uh, all sorts of things from obviously the newspaper I gave. And, uh, there's the, the water yoga and, and all sorts of activities that go on. Well, utilized services from the Commission on Aging, I hope, did, as people continue to, uh, you know, kind of head these projects to serve what we do.
So. Any other comments? I see no, none. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Commissioner Jalzinski?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Moreno, you want to pick up item five?
Sure. The motion reads, move to approve the in-home personnel individual service contract between the Isabella County Commission on Aging and Elizabeth Jane Star Jeford for services as a registered nurse affected October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, and authorize the board chairman to sign the same.
Support Swainy.
The move by Moreno, supported by Swainy, comments? Just, oh, go ahead.
Um, just that, um, we're getting a, a nurse part-time for $45 an hour. It's a pretty good deal these days.
And I think we, we have to have a registered nurse, nurse on staff to get grants as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because the area agency on aging requires that plus have a nurse on staff for some of their programs, so.
And we all know how difficult it is to get nurses nowadays, come in. It's and young people out there be, uh, look into nursing because it's a it's a occupation that is sorely needed, so. Okay. Any no more discussion, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Well?
Yes.
Commissioner Jalzinski?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Jalzinski, you want to take item number six? Personal Service Contract with Robert Lee, Paul Strickler, and Darrell Cummings. Motion reads, move to approve the individual personal service contracts with Robert Lee, Paul Strickler, and Darrell Cummings as bulk food delivery drivers from October 1, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, and authorize the board chairperson to sign the same.
Support.
The move to Jalzinski, supported by Hope, discussion. Yes. I'm gonna be a stick in the mud. Got it expected from me. I'm gonna be voting against this one. Not that I don't believe these people do an excellent job and they do a needed job for the Commission on Aging. But as I've looked at some of the coding of, uh, bills that have come in the last six to eight months, uh, I've dug a little bit deeper into some of the contractual, uh, arrangements. And there is a, uh, Federal Labor Standards Act that has a economic reality test to determine if a employee is a contractor or if a worker is a contractor or an employee. And I've ran this through that test. And my personal belief is that these individuals should be basically permanent, part-time employees of the Commission on Aging and not contractors. And if I'm right, we're violating the Federal Labor Standards Act and we're doing a disservice to these individuals because they don't have the protections and the benefits of the, uh, Federal Labor Standards Act. So while I feel these are needed, I'll be voting against this because I think this is the wrong way to, uh, uh, proceed with those workers.
Yes.
Just to comment on that, oh, the county has utilized these services for many years now. They've successfully been reviewed and vetted, uh, by the auditors and a secondary workers' comp audit, which found no violations. And we will have a closed session meeting on October 7th to go over this discussion and another item. For the board, I did receive re, uh, response. Uh, I requested legal advice on this, and so we will be going to closed session to go over what, uh, legal has prepared for us on this item, as well as another one that we need to discuss as a board.
And as I've read into, into this, even though we've been doing it forever, it doesn't make it right, nor, uh, you, you can have a contract like we have here, and that doesn't make it right. So, uh, there is another option, and that is to go directly to the U.S. Department of Labor Wage Network. And you can present that particular, um, employment situation and have them make a determination. But I feel in good conscience, and I can't support this because I think these individuals are being denied, uh, they're due under the Federal Labor Standards Act.
If I may, what would be the difference between these and the individual service contracts for activities? You voted yes on, I just going back to the individual services for activities. That was voted yes. I just, I just for myself, it was just like, I wonder what the difference between the two contractual arrangements is.
Have you ever looked at the, uh, economic reality, uh, tests?
Uh, not recently, sir.
Okay, so I couldn't make a determination on the others. I think the other ones might be valid.
Right.
But, uh, from going through the, uh, the test on these three individuals, I, I don't think it's a a valid contractual independent contractor arrangement.
And like I said, we are gonna have legal counsel to go through this and
Like I said, we are going to have legal counsel to go through this, and we've talked to some of the auditors, so we'll get everybody in on there and we'll get a legal opinion on it. I know, you know, some of these guys like Paul Stickler, those guys have been doing it for years, and there was an issue on how we could do this because we always thought that they were underpaid for the amount of miles they put on their vehicles and and this doesn't basically cover what what they they put into it, and I can't remember what the discussion was, but this has been going on for a while as far as how we could pay them more equitable, because they're basically doesn't even hardly cover their costs, so. Okay, any more discussion?
Commissioner Swainy?
I'd say, as a commissioner, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this motion as it proceeds today, knowing obviously that we're looking closer into, you know, the description of their jobs and whether it falls in line with contract or not. I I feel it sounds like Brian Smith's on top of it. We've got lots of different counsel happening. Would be a kind of slap in the face. These individuals to deny this contract at this stage, especially since and these individuals are essentially given back uh, to the community and and the commission in Isabella County and have served in these positions for a long time. You're very grateful for for them.
Okay, any more discussion? Pretty good discussion, and sir, when we have our meeting on legal, it'll be, hopefully, we'll get this put to bed and that'll be the way it goes, but we definitely questions need to be answered, and that's what the board, sometimes we get accused of always agreeing on everything altogether, but we don't, believe me. We don't. This is what the process is, and this is how we will go through, so we will look into it. We had a little trouble getting the meeting set up because the lawyer was on vacation and a couple of other things, but so anyways, that's going to happen. Yes, sir.
This is something that could take some thought. At this stage.
The meeting that we're going to have in the closed session would be October seventh, so it would be past this. Yeah.
And you know, if there is a change in how we're accounting, we do it. We could change the accounting where we do not do this. It could mess up their payment schedule and everything, so we can always go back.
Like there's going to be a fine or something, and if we don't do it now, I mean.
We just got to go.
Our budget is October first, so these guys won't get paid.
Okay.
So it's just, like I said, they've been doing this for so long, and and it's it's very hard to get people to put the time and effort in to do that, so. Like I said, there's going to be no if we have to change the system, it's not going to affect going forward these contracts, not. It'll be accounting, it'll be account, yeah. There'll be a tax accounting audit adjustment. Okay, does everybody understand where we're going with this? I don't want any misconceptions on this, so uh, good discussion, and like I said, we'll we'll get to the bottom of it and once we get a clear definition, then we'll move forward with it, so. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're up to Commissioner Swainy. Item number seven.
Isabella County Commission on Aging site agreements. Motion reads move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Isabella County Commission on Aging nutrition site agreements for congregate meal sites with Shepherd United Methodist Church at a rate of hundred and fifty per month, Fremont Township Wind Community Building at a rate of three hundred per month, Rose Bush Manor at a rate of ninety per month, and Chairman Township Waitman at a rate of two hundred and fifty per month, and authorize board chairperson to sign the same.
To the board. By Swainy, supported by Jalosinski. Comments? I don't, oh, go ahead.
Uh, we've had this basically this contract, these this contract, this rates with these community buildings um, since I've started here, and I don't remember them really changing at all over this past six years. Um, and I know that each site serves a different number of individuals who come there for meals. Well, so I'm definitely grateful for the reset. We need a service for people, make sure they get food and nutrition.
Okay. Any other comments? Uh, seeing none, let's proceed to vote.
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Commissioner Gao Zinski?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Weber, I swear I did not plan this. We have to read all these. Uh, will he take the next item?
Yep. Uh, Indian Tribe of Michigan Fall twenty twenty-five, two percent requests. Motion move to approve the following Saginaw Chipewa Indian Tribe of Michigan semi-annual two percent request for the presentation of the Saginaw Chipewa Indian Tribe by the required date of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Why don't you go down and read what the two percents are?
Yep, Commission on Aging requesting five hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars for programs and services. Applicant project priority critical. Nine one one emergency management requesting eighty-seven thousand five hundred for tower maintenance. Applicant project priority high. Material recovery recovery facility requesting one hundred thirty-four thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars fifty seven fifty-seven cents for roll-off recycling truck. Applicant project priority critical. Isabella County Conservation District requesting eighty-six thousand eight hundred dollars for household hazardous waste cleanup sweep program. Applicant project priority high. Isabella Conservation District requesting fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars for electric electronic waste recycling project application project priority critical. Humane Animal Treatment Society requesting thirty thousand dollars for shelter improvements. Applicant project priority high. And Isabella County Prosecuting Attorney requesting fifty-five thousand two hundred forty-two dollars and twelve cents for case management software and equipment. Applicant project priority critical.
Okay, we had quite a discussion during finance and Committee of the Whole going through these, and they came up and and talked about each project. We sure do appreciate the agreements we have the Saginaw Chipewa Indian Tribe and and supporting the community like they do, so. Any other questions on these?
That's one thing I'd like to point out, and I think this was nice on the for the Commission on Aging, where to date, the tribe has rewarded awarded the the Commission on Aging ten million six hundred and twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars to date for just the Commission on Aging, and that's very impressive, that number, very impressive.
Well said. Uh, any more comments? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Gao Zinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno? Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
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 Seven eyes, zero nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Hope, will you take the budget amendment?
Yes, sir. Item nine is fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-two B O C for general fund. Uh, motion reads move to approve the fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-two B O C for general fund.
Support.
Been moved by Hope, supported by Moreno. Uh, do you want to comment?
Some of the, some of the things to point out, when we look at the revenue section, we increased the revenue of the recreational marijuana distributions of to of three hundred and seven thousand nine eighty-nine. We don't know that amount until February when it's dispersed, and it's based on the previous year's licensing as of nine thirty and the amount of tax revenue that they received. So this just gets us to that dollar amount. Uh, we have a revenue of two million one hundred sixty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars, and that was for that state grant tower project that Sheriff kind of reiterated. And but you also see that there's the corresponding increase in expenses for the two million one hundred sixty-seven dollars and one hundred and seven two million one hundred sixty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars. Um, some of the other ones, you have refunds and rebates, um, conveying convicts, inmate housing, uh, so for a total increase of revenue and that amount includes that two million state uh, grant for the tower of two million six hundred fifty-three thousand eighty-three dollars. And if we look at the expenditures, some of these ones were lines that were woefully under budget, so we had to increase the amount in there to get the department whole and for some of them. The expense lines just didn't have money in them, and so like cell phone, we found in a few departments did not have any money appropriated in there. So what you see is we decreased, we completely decreased the contingency of two hundred twenty-three dollar, two hundred twenty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars. And then water sewer decrease, medical supplies, and then just a lot of different early voting expenditures of forty-six thousand six hundred and one as an expenditure, but you also see that there's a corresponding revenue increase. So that washes itself out at that point, and so then on the second page is just a more of a list of um, increases and decreases to the expenditure lines. One thing I would like to point out is that there were some capital outlay moves uh, for the furnaces and some of the weather shield roofing agreements, and then some for animal control for from flooring and furnace. And if there's more detailed questions on that, we got Finance Director Whitmer, you know, able to answer questions, but.
Any questions? I know we discussed some of these earlier, so, um. Like I said, uh. So same questions? Okay, let's proceed to vote then.
Commissioner Gao Zinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell, you want to take the next one, please?
Fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-three B O C for other funds motion. Move to approve fiscal year twenty-five budget amendments two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-two B O C for other funds. Roll call. Support.
Been moved by Campbell, supported by Moreno.
So, uh, yeah, but I just saw in the general fund, when you approve the budget and they're done on a departmental level, the other ones are done on funds. That's not general fund, so that's why you see a significantly less amount of budget just amendments done. You look at the first one, operating transfer into law library, that's to make the law library whole. And on your general fund, one that you just approved, you'll see the corresponding increase in expense of five thousand dollars, and then here's the operating transfer in a five thousand dollars, so it's corresponding at that point. And then on your general ledger one, two, you'll see that there's a capital outlay move to CCF dash N S D furnaces. That is this right here, so this is the uh, furnace replacements that was put into this uh, different fund to repair the furnaces as needed.
Comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, let's proceed to vote.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Swainy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Jalosinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that completes the committee reports. Uh, we have no internet intergovernmental affairs. Administrator?
Uh, just one thing, I touched on the closed session that we're going to have. We've also received, I would say, four applicants for the opioid committee, besides the one that Commissioner Jalosinski, uh, uh, his appointment, but we got four others, so that'll be coming to the next meeting. These four were not at the the three at large ones, but they were from specific departments or agencies.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so they're slowly coming in, and so you'll have that on your finance packet for the thirtieth with ultimate approval on the seventh. So they're they're coming in and looking forward to get that going. So that's the only thing I would like to touch on.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, we have no unfinished business. Let's move right into new business, so. Uh, Commissioner Moreno, you want it?
Okay, our first item is USDA final payment resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven. Move to approve the USDA final payment resolution number twenty twenty-five eleven for final payment to Clark Construction and authorize the board chairperson and county clerk to sign the same.
Support.
Been moved by Moreno, supported by Jalosinski. Um, will you read that that resolution? We usually try to put them in the minutes. We'll make an exception for the budget resolution, but.
Who made the?
Okay. Moreno made it.
Yeah, I get it.
Jalosinski supported.
Okay, uh, here's the Isabella County Board of Commissioners Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Motion was made by Commissioner Moreno and seconded by Commissioner Jalosinski that the chairperson of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners be authorized to sign partial pay estimate number twenty-nine, the final payment for the building loan. Motion motion carried by the following roll call vote, and then it's I hereby certify that the above is a true portion of the proceedings is incorporated in the minutes of the regular board meeting of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners held on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and then there's the spots for the chairman and the county clerk to sign the same. This was given to me by uh, the USDA representative to use as a guideline because they require when the final payment is done that a resolution from the board acknowledging that this is the final payment is sent out.
Any questions on that? Soon as we get the official vote, then that could be filled in. Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jalosinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero nays, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um. Commissioner Jalosinski, you want to take item B?
Yes. State Tax Commission Form L forty twenty-nine dash two thousand twenty-five tax rate request. Motion reads move to approve the State Tax Commission Form L forty twenty-nine dash two thousand twenty-five tax rate request affirming each county approved millage rate and authorize the board chairperson and county clerk to sign the same.
Been moved by Jalosinski, supported by Swainy. Um. We have Mr. Pete Preston here to present his form.
Well, yes, if you have any questions, it's the very standard form in order for you to levy uh, winter taxes on your on your non-operating uh, level or levies, pardon me. I do want to apologize for a slight error in my staff report. I recognized it as twenty twenty-four uh, instead of twenty twenty-five. You think I get better at cutting and pasting, but apparently not. Uh, so my apologies for that, but uh, this again, of the four counties that I worked with in equalization, uh, Isabella County has once again avoided having a headly rollback, uh, so all of these are at full millage as prior year. And the new, yeah, and the new taxable value is at the at the top there. Uh, we'll work with the, you know, as we always have with administrations, such with the apportionment report uh, to report values and what will be, you know, gained as far as uh, revenue. I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Nope, it's kind of standard form that we really need to do.
I would recommend it highly.
It's tempting to vote against it, but I won't. So any more discussion? Uh, hearing none, let's proceed with the vote.
Commissioner Hope?
Yes.
Yes.
Jalosinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Preston.
Thank you. I spent all day out in the field. It's nice to be in an air-conditioned room.
Well, they'll get cold pretty soon.
Yeah, and I'm sitting way apart from books.
Okay, Commissioner Swainy, you want to take item C, please?
Move to approve the Isabella County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six budget resolution and general appropriation. and General Appropriations Act Resolution number twenty five dash oh eight.
Support Weber.
It's been moved by Swainy, supported to Weber, and I will not make you read the resolution. We'll be here for a good half hour unless you're a fast reader, so. You want to comment, just wanted to?
Comment, just that this resolution and the budget reflects the changes requested after the last Finance Committee, committee, the whole meeting. Finance Director Whitmer went back and changed all the necessary numbers and got everything done, and I believe she sent out a copy to the board so that they understand that the, the commissioners are approving the salaries for the other elected officials at a two percent over current rates right now. But everything else remained the same, minus the reductions in each of the departments and stuff from those changes.
Pretty much what we discussed in the Finance Committee. I think everybody read it over, I think it's, I don't think there was any changes from what we discussed. If there was, I missed it.
Right?
Yeah, it's just something what we'll have to come back and address to make things better. Right up.
Okay.
Are we referencing to that after the first of the year? Oh, what, when we get into budget? Four, one.
Seven. And there was kind of gonna be a three-year process regarding.
We'll all be here.
Okay, yes, Commissioner.
Just a question, where are we at with getting the long-range financial projection?
Once this budget gets adopted, then we incorporate in there and we close out fiscal year twenty five, then we'll be able to get the accurate numbers, put in the, into the scenario and get it more accurate. So it should be sometime in the next month or two, once we get the initial closeout numbers on fiscal year twenty five.
Okay, just that it's very, very important, I think, for the board. Before we acted on the jail, we kept getting comments that we were flush with money, very strong financial condition, until we got our ten-year projection and opened up our eyes to the financial stresses that we were going to have to deal with. So this is gonna be very important to the board, thank you.
One thing I'd like to also is that as we prepare the different scenarios and stuff for that, we'll be reaching out to the board, see if there's specific things that you want to see in there, so that way you're kinda getting some of your answers, your questions answered at the same time, and then if we want to dip into funds to analyze them closer too, we can do that at the same time as well.
Appreciate that, I know there's a lot of rolling figures and those things change and constant adjustments, but the tool is a good tool. Thank you.
It, it's very helpful when we're trying to adjust spending according to MERS especially, how that changes or changes in that really affects our budget.
Something? Oh, I thought I saw your hand. Any more discussion?
Thing with, that's a vital market, I mean, recycling is crucial in county, but not M R F, Retirement Fund. Oh, sorry. All right. Merv and then MERS.
Yeah. It's close, but. Commissioner Campbell?
The act, oh.
Well, I, I do see that we, we are putting in a very large number in recycling facility for twenty twenty six, and that vital market that changes continually as far as the sale of the end product that comes out of that cardboard, plastic, et cetera. But I think we need to, in twenty twenty six, take a very close look in, because we have a lot of hurdles to overcome. You know, we have to start looking at trying to see different ways that we can rebuild our road patrol and getting the employees back into an adequate work environment. So that's just one of the statements I wanted to make that keeps rolling in the back of my mind is as far as how can we start addressing some of these issues that are gonna be facing us very, very.
Commissioner Campbell, on the issue that you raised about the volatility of the commodities on market, one of the things that we're doing right now is getting the ten thousand square foot add-on, and one of the reasons we're doing that is because we will be able to stash some of those commodities with that more space until it's advantageous for us to sell them. So we're already working on that, really.
For a couple of the new commissioners on the retirement fund, what is it, six years out, it takes a dramatic dip supposedly.
It's blended over a ten-year blend, you know, the smoothing they call it, but like we've already received what we're gonna be paying in twenty seven already, so they've already got it calculated way out based.
There is a thing where we will be paid out, they keep, we never know, every year it seems like they.
Market holds, they projected twenty eight, twenty nine, we start to see kinda like that peak and then it starts going down. Since it's a closed system like most are nowadays, your actuarial, it, it's more of an aggressive actuarial than a open system and stuff, so that's why you see more significant jumps, but we hope to have something if markets don't take a big dive, is a little bit more stable in twenty eight.
Any more questions? Yes, ma'am.
Just so the general public knows, we will have the full wording within the minute of each resolution, and they will be online within a couple days.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, Commissioner Weber, item B.
Move to consider approving Resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero nine to comply with the requirements of Public Act one fifty two and authorize the board chairperson and the county clerk to sign the same. Roll call.
I need a support. Support. It's been moved by Weber, supported by Hope, so, yeah, go ahead, you can do that.
Isabella County Board of Commissioners Resolution number two thousand twenty five dash zero nine, whereas Public Act one fifty two of two thousand and eleven was passed by the legislature and signed by the governor on September twenty seventh, two thousand and eleven, and whereas the act contains three options for complying with the requirement of this act, and whereas section eight of the act permits a qualifying unit of local government to exempt itself from the provisions of section three and section four for the succeeding year by a two-thirds vote of its governing body prior to the start of the benefit year. Now therefore be it resolved that effective September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, the Board of Commissioners of Isabella County elects to comply with the requirements of Public Act one fifty two by adopting the annual exemption option for medical plan, medical benefit plan coverage year January one, twenty twenty six through December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I'm so glad we're doing this, this is for our employees, and we're a lot nicer than the state.
Okay, it's something we need to do every year for, and it, so. Any more discussion, new commissioners understand what, understand what we're doing here, so, yep. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Jelzinski.
Yes.
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 Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Engler.
Yeah.
Seven, nine, zero, nades, motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that takes care of new business, so let's move on to general public comment. Open for any discussion topics, three minutes, and say your name, please.
Dorothy Marshall. I'm gonna read from the Personnel Manual. This was revised and adopted June seventeenth of twenty twenty five. The purpose, the county of Isabella recognizes its responsibility for attracting and employing the most qualified and capable persons for carrying out the work of the county. In order to attract and retain such employees, it is the county's intention to maintain operating policies and procedures that treat its employees fairly and equitably. The market rate adjustments that have been approved and are being, gonna be rolled out with this new budget will adversely affect three people in one area, eleven people in another area, thirteen people in another area, and I would just like to say that I feel that is neither fair nor equitable for all our employees.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to come up?
Name is Robert A. Nagy, seventy seven, sixty one, East River Road, Mount Pleasant, Michigan, Jerry, I'm back again on that recycle, whether you call it a pod, a hub, whatever you guys wanna call it. Do we really need out-county people coming in? Here's a picture, take a look at it. Picture of the ones that are coming in. Who else is gonna wanna come in, you can let them in? Are we gonna start another dump out there or like we did at the landfill, excuse me, a landfill, like we did out west of town in the Humpshire pit, if you remember that, if you've been around? We don't want this amount of tines coming in, in our backyard, our backyard. For all you guys, all your people, your constituents, your voters, residents, Venice people, it's all coming in. Consider the side effects, there's plenty of them, activities, traffic, environmentally wise, air pollution, fumes, noise, deterioration of our roads. Can we handle all the congestion on our state, county, and our township roads? Are we the people, Isabella County, be allowed to vote? Vote, 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 or just accept it as it is and not accommodate the voters, not accommodate voters who voted you people in, five oldies and two newbies? You commissioners will be innocent or guilty of what you're gonna do with how you deal with this. I don't know how far along it is, I have no information. You guys get packets and all that kinda stuff and everything, you get up to date alone. Are we halfway through that contract? If there is a contract, is it finalized, is three quarters done? What, how far along are we with these other several counties? We don't have no dialogue, we have to depend on the media to get it out, if it does even get out. We used to have a guy who used to stand on the corner of Isabella, of Broadway in Maine, and he was just playing irony, he had a microphone, and he'd talk to people on the street, and if he talked to you, he'd give you a ticket, you could go to McFarland Dairy and get a chocolate malt. That was years ago, from W C E N carried it. I think something has to happen here to, to better communicate with folks and have a better dialogue with the people out there that you're supposedly working for. And we gotta get Rick Mills and Sue Knickerbocker Fields to loosen up on the letters to the editor. We used to have that, we don't have that anymore. Very, very few people can loosen up with the letters to the editor anymore. You can't find out what people think anymore, and I think that's what you guys need, is you need to hear from the general public, not just what you guys run around here a little circle and do, and it sounds good to you and everything, but are you really protecting the people that voted you in? So that's about all I have to say. I appreciate you giving my time to speak, and I'll leave you alone.
Thank you. Okay, the microphone's still open. Is there anybody online or not? Okay, at this time, I would like to close the public comment, and so we'll go to announcements, commissioners. Jerry?
I'd like to thank the county clerk for the display setup at her new office complex, showing the commissioners and our various committees, I think that's very informational, thank you.
Other comments? I got one after everybody speaks.
Um, there's an event Saturday called Let Peace Reign that the Isabella County Human Rights Committee puts on, they've been doing it for many years, it's a, it's a very nice event, there's speakers and, and things, this one's gonna take place at Town Square from three to six P M, Saturday, this coming Saturday, February twenty. Let peace reign.
Any other comments? I'd like to talk to the board real quick. What we have coming up is our job, our administrative job performance review. We've kinda changed everything else up, but we got two new commissioners. How we usually do it is our legal body, Toski, would send out a form, they send it, you make comments, you come back, and then we, we go through it. If, there's a, I always thought we could do it better, so if you guys have ideas, how you'd like it changed, get ahold of me, we need to get this going fairly soon, if not, we'll probably do it the same way we always did it, but if we can improve on the situation, I do it. Like I said, we have two commissioners here that's never been through the process, so. So I'll be taking phone calls if anybody has ideas, and if there's, we can improve on it, we'll probably end up doing it the same way if we always do it, but.
Is there a sample that can be sent to us for review?
Yeah. I'll probably pull up last year's, maybe, performance reviews.
Yeah, I'll see if somebody can send last year's, it was in a part of the board packet, so you'll see how it was done, so.
I mean, it's, it's kinda your standard.
But you'll see.
Lots of questions, one through ten, you circle it, then if you have any comments, and.
And I'll show you, like, we can send exactly what Bonnie Toski had sent as the final thing for the board, which will contain all the questions and areas for the comments, so you'll see what it looks like.
I just always thought there could be a little better way to do it, but if not, we'll, we'll do it, but I'll look for comments from the board. Huh? Yeah, yeah, no, but I mean, the process, it just, we've, we've changed so much of the process already that this would be a good time to change the process again, but if, if there isn't a better way, we'll do it that way, because the performance review has to be done, so.
And I just brought it up to the chairman, just if the board wants it to stay the same, I don't, I don't care.
Otherwise, we would have had it earlier, but just came up, and we probably need to get it done before the first of the year, so. So anyways, if any changes, we'll consider that, and we'll try to figure out, if not, we'll probably end up doing the same thing, but I just wanna leave it open for ideas. So, any other comments? Uh, seeing none, I guess I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Don't move, Moreno.
The motion by Moreno.
Support.
Supported by Jelzinski, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Foes the same. The motion is passed, we are adjourned, thank you. Six oh eight.